Just want to remind everyone that, of course, we're going to have the Goodwill Fair at the end. So, me, we need you to sign up now during the meeting to be able to share with us your concerns, your questions if you might have about our city, about things that are going on. The other thing that's important to remember is that we have a three-minute limit on the length of the comments. We have this way we can hear from everyone. And finally, the last, next to last comment that is important to remember is the quorum here at City Council. Like any government function, we expect the right kind of respect from one another for the council and vice versa. And one thing that I just wanted to make sure that everyone really saw, and I don't know if this was at all going to be mentioned, we owe it from Mendez's debt to a person that sits up here with us for a very recent thing that you may not have seen this through today, but Long Beach has collected close to $2 million in bad taxes, most of it from Nassau County due to the very hard work of our Corporation Council attorney, Mr. Robert H. Stacy. I think he deserves a great amount of credit. And exactly true is that some of that money was collected from the Algecara, and we know that the Algecara is having a really hard time too. But it's so amazing that some of the money came from the Lido area, the Lido Forest tourist sewage service that we provide, and we were not being paid for. So, this is a tremendous step forward for the city. It's money that we can very much use. And with that, I will turn the mic over to Mr. Prech.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Wednesday, October 25, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. On the local call, Councilor Gargani.
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Councilmember Mandel.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Ramon.
Here.
President Torres.
Here.
That's a regular indication, President of City Manager Jackson, and Corporation Council Robert H. Stacy will now listen to the play.
Councilman Ramon, would you lead us tonight as the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which serves its hands. Why do I mention I'm not a god, and am I just a little liberty and justice for all?
Good evening, folks. Again, I now invite our city council, I'm sorry, our city manager to give us the update on Long Beach.
Okay, I promise to speak quickly this evening. I know many folks want to see the Met game tonight. First pitch, 8:05. The Long Beach Police Department and the North Park Crisis Team helped their third annual Night Out barbecue on Saturday, September 24, in Candy Plaza. Thank you all who participated and helped make it a success. On Sunday, September 25, as parties prepared as much, the Residential Rebuilding Assistance Program hosted yet another storm-recovered resource fair. Additionally, Traverda Solutions was on hand to provide comprehensive tools and training options to help Long Beach residents be prepared for any emergencies. The weather held out for the ancient order of Hibernian's St. Brendan Navigator Parade and Festival this past Saturday. City was happy to provide our Kid Zone and West School. Again, thank you to everyone for helping make it a successful day. The restructuring of Party Avenue and Foster Street are both underway. Improvements will be similar to those installed on F2 Boulevard, which is nearly complete. No parking signs will be put up 24 hours in advance. One car will need to be removed from a block for the day, with typically working hours between 8:00 and 4:00 on weekdays. Communities' input has been crucial in guiding the city through a comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program process. The ninth open house takes place tomorrow, Thursday, October 6, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Magnolia Community Center. The meeting will be set up as an open house. You can drop by at any time. City staff and consultants will be on hand answering any questions you have. Visit longbeachsolutions.gov dot com to view the draft plan concepts and provide feedback. The annual McAvoy Labor Day Five Mile Run has been rescheduled for this Saturday, October 8. Three sponsors, Betpage Federal Credit Union. Visit longbeachny.com/reg to sign up. Also, on Saturday, residents of Long Beach and surrounding communities are invited to run a free guided tour from 12 to 2 of solar-powered Long Beach homeless buildings. Guests will have the opportunity to learn firsthand about the process of going solar from homeowners and local professionals while enjoying a ride upon the Long Beach Trolley. It's a free event. Hour registration is required. Visit the city website for more information. City's 20th Annual Fall Festival is taking place this Saturday and Sunday, October 8 to 9, Candy Plaza. All Fall Fest favorites will be back, including pumpkins, rides, costume parade, and more. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the City of Long Beach is partnering with the Long Beach Cinema 4 on October 25 at 7:00 p.m. for a special screening of Under the Same Moon, La Vizma Luna, with English subtitles. Hope you see everybody there.
Thank you. Mr. Prech.
Okay, thank you.
To our calendar, I have one as resolution authorized and the city manager to enter treaty contract for the furnishing and installation of wardrobe and box lockers at the city's ice arena.
Flood waters from superstorm sent into significant damage to the ice arena, as we know, destroying the lockers used by skaters. Fund for the city's renovation has been provided through public assistance, grant on its property, as well as the capital improvement plan. This is one of the last projects over there in the fall that we're having to see move.
How long will that take? Do we have an idea?
I'll ask the acting commissioner of labor to give the sort of quick overview.
Local Commissioner Riau. Thank you very much. Yes, we received a bid at the bottom of public works to replace the lockers at the ice arena. These were destroyed by Hurricane Sandy, as Jack indicated. You know, this is what's called a work-to-decompleting component of project work sheet for Pima. So, basically, they're going to run the whole thing, probably about a six-week to two-month wait time, the lockers. We haven't had the, obviously, hurricane's saying, so it's been about three and a half years. So, it's a big, long-term project.
Mr. Prech, thank you very much. Do you all have any questions?
Yes. Will that render the locker not a commission profile or will this still be agreed?
No, right now it's in commission. It's just, we just don't have lockers.
Have all the works been done?
No, they shouldn't be going back.
Any other questions for the council? Okay. How about any comments for the public? Item number one, the lockers, the restoration of the locker. Sir, please come forward. Come up to the mic. Give your name for the record, and good to see you here.
My name is Willie Essner, and I'm a retired science department chairperson. And I'm surprised to see that there was only one bid that was submitted by the vendors, because whenever I purchased any kind of materials or equipment for science departments in the school districts where I worked, we always had to get at least three different bids. And I'm sure that there are many equipment manufacturers out there that could provide the bids. Although, Diggerson certainly is a reputable company. They have used them in the past to provide science equipment. There are companies out there that would also provide that work.
Good question.
Thank you.
Good question. I'm sure that this amount of money, you know, the bid process did, the procurement process was adhered to by the municipality of Long Beach. Do you want to add anything to this, Mr. Prech?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was covered, and it was adhered to, the process. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes. Ms. Smith, how are you?
Good.
We just need your names.
Well, these lockers travel to the location that the wreck is going to be moved to.
I don't think I understand the question. Will the lockers travel to, if you could repeat that?
How long, when they replace the lockers? That's what they're doing, right?
Yes.
Are they going to, when the wreck move, are you going to replace it with new lockers or are they still going to be using the same lockers? The location? The wreck is going to always be over there, right?
There's no immediate plan for changing the wreck right now.
Oh.
There's no immediate plan.
Oh, so how long is that going to?
It was mentioned six weeks, two months.
No, I'm saying when the wreck is going to be moved.
There are no immediate plans.
Oh, okay.
It could be years from now.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Scott. I'm sorry, Mr. [inaudible]. Okay. Are there any comments, any other questions regarding this item number one? Okay, let that little one for our next item.
I implore the resolution establishing base proportions in accordance with provisions article 19 of the real property tax law.
Okay, this is an annual resolution which provides the Tax Assessor's Office with the overwhelming necessary to calculate property tax rates pursuant to the real property tax law of the state of New York, which is levied upon homestead, residential, non-homestead, commercial property, as directed by the state of New York. This legislature has passed by the state legislature and signed by the government.
Okay, any comments from the council? Any comments from the public on this item number two, on the requirement by the state that we have to go out on the taxi between residential and commercial property? Okay, yes, Duba. Good to see you.
Good evening, Lou Dubeau. What is this exactly? Is this an increase in taxes or is this, I'm sure this is?
It's not increasing or decreasing taxes. I'll yield to Robert if we get beyond mine by scope on this, but it's the ratio between what's a resident, what are of our tax logic that is existing, what's residential, what's commercial.
That's interesting, boy. That's all that's required in the statute by your state. It's also set by your state every year.
Oh, okay.
In fact, it's probably a formality that we do this.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item number two? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Item three is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding carryout bags. This item is a publication only. Hearing will be held October 18 at 7:00 p.m. Item four is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding plumbing. This item is a publication only. Hearing will be held October 18 at 7:00 p.m. Item five is a resolution authorized publication of a notice of public hearing on application of waiting for three pumping requirements for premise 58 West Park Avenue, a street floor, for a retail store and wine bar. This item is a publication only. Hearing will be held October 18 at 7:00 p.m.
On to the board.
Item one is a resolution authorized by the city manager to enter treaty contract for the furnishing and installation of wardrobe and box lockers at the city's ice arena.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding carryout bags.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
I will.
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding carryout bags.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
I will.
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding carryout bags.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
I will.
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding carryout bags.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
I will.
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding plumbing.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of avoidance to event code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding plumbing.
Who would be option for this item?
I will.
Who would be second?
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorized publication of a notice of public hearing on application of waiting for three pumping requirements for premise 58 West Park Avenue, a retail store and wine bar.
Who would be option for this item?
I do.
Who would be second?
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
City manager's monthly personnel reports filed by the city clerk. They await abortion to close the meeting.
I will.
Who would be second?
I will.
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
City manager's monthly personnel reports filed by the city clerk. They await abortion to close the meeting.
I will.
Who would be second?
I will.
Boy, Councilor Gargani.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes. Okay, this closes our meeting and begins our Goodwill Fair portion of our meeting. Again, just as a reminder, we have a three-minute limit on questions and comments you'd like to make regarding city functioning, city business. And, you know, I think it's extremely, extremely important for us as a municipality to hear from you. And that's exactly what this is intended to be. We need to hear what's on your mind, what's of your concern, what concerns you have from others. And this is the opportunity to hear from all of you. Our first person, and again, just keep in mind that, of course, we have to keep the kind of decorum that we like to have in any government function. Our first person is Ms. Deena Fiore. Does Fiore please come forward? Pleasure to have you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. Let's go, pets. My name is Deena Fiore, and I would just like to voice my concern, as well as the concern of hundreds, if not thousands, of other residents of Long Beach regarding the proposed project at 530 West Broadway here in Long Beach, which is currently beside the Hebrew Academy. As I am sure you are aware, the developer is proposing to build two 154-foot towers on the lot, the townhouses between these towers. As I am sure you are aware, hundreds, if not thousands, of residents here in Long Beach are vehemently opposed to this project because it is clearly out of character for the West Home neighborhood. It will result in severe detriment to the residents of the neighborhood, and our tax tower already overburdened infrastructure. Worse yet, the only reason being given by the developer for moving forward with this massive project is profit, which hundreds of residents here in Long Beach would characterize as a breach. We are not against developing. We are against old development. We urge the entire City Council to take a public stand on this project and voice your opposition to this project. As such, we would like to know your position on this subject. We thank you very much for your time and consideration regarding this matter.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fiore. Publicly, I too am opposed to this project. Thank you for coming, everyone here. I acknowledge your presence and your presence on past meetings. When this does go before the zoning board, I plan to speak and articulate my position. But for the reasons you just expressed, I too am opposed to it. You're welcome.
Once again, I just want to thank you. Thank all of you who were here this evening. Unfortunately, I missed the other meeting event. I was told the October 13 meeting was happening, but it's not. But when the time comes, I will also attend that meeting because I stand with you and I'm positioned to this particular project. Again, as you've already stated, again, we can welcome and encourage development, but not overdevelopment, because this is about maintaining the quality of life for our residents. And so, I stand with you in terms of this particular position.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore, we appreciate that. And also, the council recognizes also the presence of, of course, everyone who I can see is here with me. And again, thank you so much for being with us tonight, and thank you for bringing this up to us right now. We will have to study this further before we can give you an official position on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next person on the line is Mr. David Garfinkel. Mr. Garfinkel, are you here? Welcome, Mr. Garfinkel.
David Garfinkel, 535 West Broadway. Yeah, unfortunately, I'm following the far more eloquent ones, Ms. Fiore, than in my opinion, the far more eloquent. But in any event, I guess, not to belabor what she made, but I said more far more eloquently. I just want to present a personal anecdote. I personally spent all my time to that block, specifically for the zoning and the character of that block. And I ask the council to respect other people that might have done that. And this is a really nice place. Long Beach is a wonderful city. And I come here a lot from New York. And as I said, I'm living here, my family are here. I spent everything I had to get the place, and it's something on this block, worth the zoning, and then to be greeted by this. And I don't know if it's a little something there, but this is just so grotesque and bizarre, and if you don't understand it, so I may ask the City Council, but please, have a think about this, and the people who came to this place and built the character of Long Beach, make this a special place, and respect that, and really have the legacy being of the people who honor that, honor the people, and really make Long Beach progress and not become like a traffic hell and anything that that would be. And should just go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garfinkel. Our next person is Mr. Matthew Adler. Welcome, Mr. Adler. Good evening, that's Adler. I'll make it quick, so I get on to the first pitch. The comprehensive plan that we've actually released, I read through it, I tried to, it was very comprehensive, and I appreciate that, and I thank everyone who worked on it. Is there going to be any kind of presentation that disseminates the information, because a lot of it is technical and hard to understand?
Yes, as the process moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go, pets.
Okay, our next person, I had to reassure myself with the pronunciation, is Michael Delory. Welcome, Mr. Delory.
I succeed here.
I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good day.
That's why.
I could just start by saying my name, Michael Delory, 621, Long Beach, New York. Firstly, I try to highlight a few items, but I like to start off first and foremost by giving the Long Beach City Manager an excellent rating, in my opinion. Financial markets and increasing upgrades to the city's fiscal performance, reducing the city's fiscal stress considerably, initiating the Long Beach Response Act. I have used it. I give it a rated. We had no consultation before. This is my personal opinion. Initiating the LED street lighting program. It will save the city tens of thousands of dollars, if not more. One area to consider, however, is some feedback that I've received from my neighbors. Is it possibly looking into installing a visor to prevent invasive lighting, which I'm specifically talking about the walks area, for residents' feedback. Not my own personal issue. It's not myself. Neptune Boulevard looks excellent. Community feedback seminars and workshops, excellent. I've attended a few. I think tomorrow night is another meeting at the senior center. Lastly, in my opinion, the city manager has more than earned his salary increase in contract extension, and I applaud the City Council for doing that. I want to thank the Corporation Council for recovering $2.5 million in back taxes. And Scott Manell, thank you for your article about zoning in the Herald. Number two, I don't expect an answer tonight, but if you do have one, that'd be great. What is the ticket exchange? You see on the attachment, it said double in volume. How much additional revenue? Have you thought of the half-day rate starting at 2:00 p.m. if you need to attract more revenue? The attachment is from the newsletter I received. I just had a question. I don't expect an answer tonight, but maybe in the future, or we could update the residents on that, because I know it was a debate about raising the fees at the time. Number three, walks area, speed bump question. There are currently two speed bumps on West Walnut Street between New York and Grand Boulevard. Do you require a certain amount of signatures from residents to look into the installation of more and locations I've mentioned here? I'll try to keep within three minutes. The parking idea, possibly looking to purchasing vacant land in an area that I described here. Number five, the Toro Law School and the review of current zoning in the city. Has it started, question mark? If it has started, will it look into areas of interest, notably West Broadway, from Grant to National Boulevard, as well as Shore Road? To summarize, the Army Corps of Engineers project, can you update on us what to expect in the next few months? Lastly, future considerations. I will not read this tonight, but this is something for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delory. I have to say that these are very important items that you brought about, and I think you and I are neighbors. I live on West Walnut right now, on June Walk, exactly. I know exactly what you're saying. And I appreciate what you're saying, too, about the lighting. And these are things that, you know, we are looking into. About the speed bumps, I think that is the only block in that area that has speed bumps. Very interesting. I know that they were installed 10 years ago, and it was through a popular demand. So, that's usually what has to happen. So, we'll look a little bit at that. We appreciate you putting this in writing, because this way we can study it and get back to it. Thank you, neighbors. Good work. And we have Mr. Lou Dubeau, correct? Okay. I kind of lose sense of when the folks speak, because I have the duty of generalizing and the Goodwill Fair. Welcome, Mr. Dubeau.
Jack, was that your father or something? I agree with you, but, you know. Anyway, I have two things to bring up. One is the Volcanet project. I know the, of course, started on, of course, this place is on the beach. Obviously, this hurricane moving up, it looks like it's going to clear away, and I start getting very anxious again. Although my house is elevated, I'm right on the water. So, one question was, what's going on with that? I know there's planning and et cetera, et cetera. And I think the original target date that it actually started, I think, was in 2017, late 2017. That's my first question. Second question, there was a light, a flex valve put at the end of Kirkwood Street, doesn't work. We are, I spoke to Joe about it a couple of months ago. The problem seems to be when there gets grease in there, it blocks it, and it doesn't work. I have pictures from, high tide from three weeks ago, when the North Shore of the coast, and there's water in the street that just backs up. I think you need to have a regular maintenance program on all those valves, otherwise, it's just a waste of money. So, it's going to make two things.
Real quick, I know that there'll be upcoming public work on the North Shore Volcanet project in the very near future. I can't speak to the specific Kirkwood tie flex valve, so I know Joe's here and can speak to you about it. But I do know there is absolutely a regular maintenance program for those tie flex valves.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have another question. Is there any way that we can give additional information to those individuals who live in this now area? Because right now, obviously, the storm has shifted. But if not, were we prepared to get a message out, some form of communication to those residents who live in that area and/or any other areas that, for the most part, are flood prone?
We always, if we have an incoming storm, we always do CY robocalls. We would absolutely do that as well.
Thank you.
And also, the robocalls are done in Spanish as well. Very important part of the work we've done here. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dubeau. We have Tiselle Scott. Please get there again.
Tiselle Scott, I have two questions. One, East Fulton Street by Kentucky Fried Chicken, the street lights aren't on, and it's very dark coming up the street at night, and everybody is obsessed with, you know. So, if we could, you know, get the lights turned on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've actually driven the community. Well, we've been through there a couple of times, and the lights are on one side, but not on the other side. It's extremely dark there, and this has been going on for a couple of months. So...
so I'm not sure if I can actually, Commissioner, to speak to this in terms of the lights. I know that there were issues in the past in terms of the, the actual vendor was taking care of those lights, but if you have any additional information, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing the information, because that is a question that we get every other day about the light.
Yeah, I mean, the last, uh, few residents touched on, on many issues, I can just go over a few, try to be very, very brief. Um, as far as the LED lights, let's go back to that one side. We did recently retrofit the whole city with LED, energy-efficient lighting, and we have had those calls about, um, the layer that's associated with those lights. Again, just everyone's aware, we did order approximately fifty, uh, the old layer shields that can be put on the, the home side of the streetlight, the control, you know, that glare coming in their window and causing destruction. Um, issue number two, something mentioned, Long Beach World Project, um, just a very quick update, they did start the project in the middle, um, because they were moving both these streets west and east of the town. Um, speed homes, I mentioned speed homes, we do have a process we can have the issue put together, um, which residents can come see in, in the office, and we can put that with MP four, and maybe put petition out. Um, regards to the lighting on Oak Street, I call that. Um, we have had problems with our electrical contractor, Palace Electric, who started July first. We are in the process, um, Rob and I, of working with that contract to try to sort them out, but they, you know, they haven't been great. But, uh, we, we had a different contract in five, five July first, and they were, they were much better. Uh, it's, it's been trying in the last three months, you know, I'm sure every council member here has gotten hold probably in the last month of that, of streetlight being out. Um, we are, we're working on it though, and to will, to yours specifically, to see if, uh, we can get that taken care of. Um, as far as titleless valves, um, I promised this is a valve, you will be able to look at that?
Good, thank you, Jack.
Now, I know this is a point that he gave us before, but, I think one of the issues is the title issue, we can't really look at that, that valve until it's all tied. It's a little complex to get at it from the water side, um, you know, we don't have a boat, but we normally have access over the ladder of the tie, so it's not that easy to actually clean, clean that valve, but we're going to have one more contract, uh, I think. And just one side note, he said, oh, the date is due tomorrow, I don't care, I know he asked about that in the comments, is due in our open seven eleven o'clock tomorrow? If everything goes well, we should have it on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Great news. Thank you, thank you.
I've covered some of those questions that we discussed.
Yes, yes, Commissioner, thank you for that update. That's great, thank you.
Last question, in reference to the soup as well, Jackie, Victor, and John, it's, it's like so disgusting. Sometimes I'm not even in the area, I still smell like maybe it's in my system or something. Is there something that could be done, some type of fragrance or something that, you know, can get the people like?
I don't have an answer right now unless, we'll ask those departments to look at it. Yes, thank you, Mr. Uh, good to see you. Uh, Mr. Bill Dodge. How are you, Mr. Dodge? Welcome.
Welcome. I'd just like to read you a letter that I've already sent to the city council. Some of you have answered, some of you have not yet answered, so to make sure that everybody has it. Audible city council members, on July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, at six forty-five P.M., the COA was advised of meeting to be held to discuss the COA contract. This meeting was described by one of the attendees as a caucus to discuss the COA contract. The COA was advised that Miss Darlene Taggney would be present at this meeting and would likely be an impediment to the COA getting the contract. We were further advised that her standing as the independent Democratic Club leader gave her influence with those city council members at this caucus. It is our understanding that not all members of the city council were invited to or in attendance at this caucus to discuss the COA labor contract. We are obviously extremely concerned that this caucus included a civilian, non-employed, non-contracted person who is conferred with by the city council member or members regarding the business of the city and our labor union. It is obvious, based on our information and belief, that Miss Taggney's input greatly swayed the decision of certain city council members, because in response to our prior letter, it appeared that the majority of the city council supported the application of the PVA award to the COA. Yet, after this caucus, the council has not applied the award to the COA. We respectfully request that each member of the city council respond to this letter and advise if they were invited to this caucus on July eighteenth, and if they did in fact contend. Any additional insights as to why this outside entity was brought in to discuss the COA contract would be extremely helpful. As always, we continue to be available to discuss this, any other matter with you, and we look forward to your timely response. I don't expect a response right now. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, we now have, uh, Ms. Wendy Rivas. This is Jenny, right?
Yes.
Hello. Just leave your names and, and, uh, just let us know. What, what?
Jenny Rivas, D.D.
Yeah, what was my close to you, my?
Oh, Jenny Rivas.
Uh, she needs help.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I have a little concern about, um, I am a member at the Long Beach Education Center, um, for six years, we don't have no cold shower, um, we would appreciate if they can fix it, to be repaired, whatever, because, uh, there are a lot of members that they use the steam room, and when it, whether it's cold, we need to be in like a cool of...
It, it's the shower of this network?
Yeah, the cold shower, on the ladies, on the ladies side.
Okay, so you, you don't have hot water in the, or cold water?
No, in other words, we have regular showers, you know, but, uh, like the warm shower, but we have only one cold shower, you know, usually it's for the people that they use the steam room.
Okay, uh, folks, I'm going to have to resort to a little bit of Spanish here. Digan exatamente lo. El problema es que no tienen agua caliente o agua frigüe?
No, no tenemos agua helada para las personas que usan el steam room.
Okay. What she's asking for is for cold water to those folks using the steam room. Right? Okay, I, I didn't understand that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, do we have any, and, of course, we may not be able to have an answer right now, but it's something that we will, yeah, we'll look into it, okay? Ms. Rivas, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in so many years. Yes, uh, and again, welcome. And folks, that ends our city council meeting for tonight, and I wanted to thank everyone. Again, we need to hear from you, so it's an important part of what we do. Thank you again, folks, again, home, stay clear. Thank you.